So.
Okay, I'll call the Social County Council Meeting to order. If we all rise. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Those present of the court. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the August thirteenth meeting. There was, I'll go ahead and mention, there was two changes since the one I emailed you. And the one that Gail has printed out here has one of them fixed. It had Scott absent at the top. He was here. So she fixed that one. The other one at the bottom of the page was for the vote on the wine festival request. And Scott doesn't get it instead of the made. So that's been changed down here at the bottom. So I would actually let you see. Is there anything? Anything else needs changed or any questions?
Make a motion that's not been changed.
My second motion.
Scott, the second, for Carrie to accept the minutes with those two changes I mentioned. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Next is the meeting on September second with the, this was with the Highway Department. Special meeting. Any questions with that? I wasn't at this.
Last year. Got any questions?
Entertaining motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the September second meeting.
On the second? Carrie, in a second. Scott. All those in favor, raise your hand. And next on the agenda is our public hearing for the county budget. So I'm going to suspend on regular meeting and open a public hearing on the county budget. It's been entered in the gateway. I sent everyone the form three. Gail entered. So we're advertising a total county budget of eleven million nine hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Have any questions or concerns from the audience? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Todd, in second, Carrie, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, back to our regular council meetings. Health Department budget update. So I emailed over the latest information from the Health Department, which they've been working pretty much continuous since, on this budget, since we had our budget hearing with them on the twenty-fifth. And just to kind of summarize what they sent over on the, so after our meeting, they met with their, the regional director with the Indiana Department of Health, who assisted with some budget items. Then they met also with Paige from Baker and Tilly this week. I'm sorry, Thursday, September fourth. So they were able to reduce their, the eleven fifty-nine county health budget down to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. And their Health First funding is now set at eighty thousand one eighty-one. So she writes in here, "We're pleased to report that we're in good standing with both the Indiana Department of Health regarding our fund utilization with Baker Tilly concerning our budget balancing." So I sent all that over to you guys. Does anybody have any questions about that or?
I do. I know we just got this two hours ago. And so I talked to Paige this afternoon. And what I'm seeing here, and you guys should come up and answer these questions. What cuts did you make? Because Paige is telling me when you went into her office, you basically showed her the budget coming out of your Health Department meeting. But she was not asked, you know, where your cuts were coming from. All she did was say, "Yeah, you're underneath the budget." You're, "We told you to get underneath two hundred thousand. You accomplished that." What I'm seeing, and again, only in two hours, is when I look at the HFI budgets, specifically salary, did you allocate some of that HFI budget over into the county fund budgets of the Health Department?
Yeah, Doc, I'm at the registrar.
I'm talking about any salaries. So I guess first is, being that she doesn't know what cuts were made, what cuts did you make to get this down?
You asked us to cut the budget of eleven fifty-nine to one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That's what we presented to Paige. She had no questions or no concerns about that.
Nor would, all that Paige is supposed to do is look and make sure that we're at the one eighty-nine. That's, that was, that's clearly what her message was. All, that's all I looked at. Because I asked her, "Do you know the cuts that they made?" No, they didn't share that with me. All I'm looking at is the one eighty-nine. So I'm asking, how did you, what did you cut to get down to that one eighty-nine?
We, we got our budget one eleven fifty-nine to one eighty-nine. What we took was our other operating expenses and used two other budgets to be able to provide the same services we've always provided and then also utilize those services in the eleven sixty-one and then part of eleven sixty-one two thousand and twenty-four carryovers. So we transferred money, expenses to other grants that we have available that will cover those expenses. And that's how we were, that's how we're able to balance the budget.
Okay.
We moved those over to other areas and other accounts.
Okay. So now-
We did exactly what you asked us to do.
Okay. Out of the Health First Indiana, did you take your salary dollars that were dedicated to Health First Indiana? Are those salary dollars now in the county Health Department? Any portion of them?
The same as we discussed August the twenty-fifth, the thirty-six for the registrar. We moved back, we're asking you to move that-
Register of salaries and eleven fifty-nine.
And it's in the salary ordinance.
But here's our, here's, here's what I was talking to Paige about. Those dollars originally, Health Department came to us earlier in the year. They designated, according to Health First, a percentage of dollars that they had increased based off of the program of Health First. Now Health First is being reduced. So those salary dollars should be reduced, not leaving the same. You're, you've gone from a three hundred thousand dollar HFI budget down to what the state is offering, eighty thousand.
I mean, it's a thirty-six thousand dollar salary. I don't think it was-
That's exactly what it was.
I don't think it's much.
You asked for six thou, six thousand, was it?
Where's-
Into Health First. There were two, there were two increases made. One for you, for ten thousand dollars.
What, no, 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 no. Where are you getting that?
That's what you have at HFI. And I-
That is not me.
Who is that?
Totally. That's the entire staff of the Health Department.
So whole department's-
That is a stipend. It does not say Kathy Slosson. It does not say administrator. It's a stipend account. You assume that. I heard, you assume that.
No, I'm talking to HFI, how this works. They, they're the ones that send me-
You're asking me about ten thousand dollars that comes to me?
I'm asking you this. Did you take, is any of the HFI program now over into the county health fund?
Not anything that wasn't there before. If there was no Health First Fund, if there's none. And we said, "We want to come to you and we would like to hire a registrar." It's in your salary ordinance. Then would you have said no? Because you have it there. It's available.
Right.
And so you're trying to say that it's coming from Health First Fund.
I'm not trying to say it.
We just took it. You are saying it. And we just took that and put it in the Health First Funds, which I see now as a big mistake. We should have just come to you and said, "We're going to fill the registrar position and you pay that forty thousand dollars a year." But we didn't. We paid it out of Health First Funds. So we made a mistake by doing that. And when it's always been eleven fifty-nine salary ordinance, it's always been that.
Okay, so-
So we're not, we're not adding-
You're saying you didn't do any, you did not move the salary dollars over from Health First. They're not in the community fund. That's what you're saying.
I'm saying that we are using it for salary and we are asking it to be paid like it's always been paid out of eleven fifty-nine for years.
Okay, so in, in your budget, in your budget that I'm looking at, you are the administrator.
Right.
You had a salary of forty thousand seven seventy-four ninety-nine in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-five's budget, that jumps to fifty thousand two ninety-five. And I'm telling you, we're, we didn't authorize an increase for you.
Oh, yes, you did.
Hold on, hold on. We didn't authorize it for this cost center. We authorized it for Health First because-
Why? The administrator is not in Health First.
Doc, you came to us and said, "Because of the program, because of the program and the amount of administration that needs to be done, you're on, that's on a recording. You say, 'We're going to pay it out of Health First.'" That's what, that's on the recording. So that, that jumps to this fifty thousand two ninety-five. We didn't authorize that. We just pay not Health First. That's what Health First is telling me.
Well, Health First doesn't-
That's the report.
No, that can't happen.
You kind of like to twist numbers, right? I've noticed. You, you say a lot of things that are factual.
You asked that question, right?
Yes, but it's perfectly fine to use stipends from Health First Indiana to get local Health Department salaries up. So for retention, lack of going back and training and one thing or nothing. Now, what's going to happen in two years? I have no idea. I'm hoping you guys will pick up the slack and start balancing stuff. I mean, we can't have, we can't be working off of the boat as welfare for the county. We can't be working off the- We're trying to eviscerate, totally eviscerate this Health First Indiana budget. So it's, we can, we can necessarily, or we could certainly stay like with, we could be ninety-two out of ninety-two in some categories in poor health. We can be eighty-eight out of some categories. We can be way up the top in poor health in, in the state of Indiana. We've remained that, but the problem we've got, we've gotten into is that we are taking this budget that was meant to do other things. We have had that very skillfully and time-consuming, it was, to prepare that such that that falls within the sixty percent, forty percent expenditures. If you know so much about Health First Indiana, you would know that. And I think you don't know as much about Health First Indiana, do you? I didn't see you at any of those. I didn't either there in February.
Something about you, Doc. I'm looking at your budget that I received two hours ago. I have six other members here. I don't know if they've even had a chance to look at this.
You're saying false statements.
I mean, you asked about salary. He answered it. What else did you go?
Right. So what I, I guess what I'm saying to you folks is, to the council, I've only had a chance to look at this for two hours to see where the cuts are made. I have talked to Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is saying, "All I looked at was the actual dollars. I don't know what's been cut in operational costs to get you to this level."
So, so why didn't you reach out to them? And it's been-
Two hours?
No, since August twenty-fifth, when we identified the problem.
What are you talking about?
What am I talking about? I've been talking with them for two weeks.
Lance, you offered them Baker Tilly. What am I going to tell them? They had their meeting with them. There was nothing for me to talk about.
Check in. You can call them. You can't pick up the phone and call them and ask how it's going?
Lance.
You got concerns and you want to know what the latest is?
Within the last two hours. This is what I'm talking about.
I won't send it to you. I know it was two hours.
So I didn't know the numbers for the last, since the twenty-fifth. What are you talking about?
But we've also established along the way, we just did this probably three-
You haven't even looked at the numbers, Lance.
But we're not voted to approve it anyways.
That's what I was going to say. I think we should just move forward with it and take a hard look at this because it's evident that nobody's looked at this.
Because when I'm looking, here's where my question is. When I'm looking at twenty twenty-five year-to-date actual on what you emailed, for instance, if I'm looking at Health First, it shows sixteen thousand six fifty in a year-to-date. When are year-to-date actual? Or when I'm looking at this one on year-to-date actual, it's showing twenty-two two seventy-five. So obviously what you sent and what's in my budget book aren't the same number.
Exactly.
And, and I did work with Paige up till this morning and she was sending me reports this morning. I got it as fast as I could.
Kathy, I'm saying, we all got this two hours ago.
As fast as I could get it to you. I was working.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm willing to throw it off the table and say, "I need more time to look at it." You say she needs more time.
I got it on my phone. It's hard for me to read it and there was no printer where I could print it.
And you could have postponed. I'm sorry. I don't-
Maybe the objective was, the president should have said, "Hey, we need more time to look at this," and that not bring it to tonight where we let two hours discuss it.
Why are we arguing? Why are we not working to make-
We're done with this topic and we're going to move on to the next one. I thank you guys for bringing it. And we, we've got the information and we'll go from there. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get time during, during comments?
Perhaps.
All right.
See if we make it to questions from the audience.
Next item is updated salary ordinance. This involves the clerk's office job titles. That clerk record was asked to be changed. We reviewed those in the August thirteenth meeting. So Gary updated the ordinance and, Gail, we're calling this ordinance number ten. Is that right?
Nine.
Nine.
It, it should be ten, nine, ten, twenty-five, nine is how it should be listed.
So she's, she's got it written up here. So this is a one we'll sign.
No salary was changed. It's just-
This is just a title change. I said clerk of course. Did everybody have a chance to look this over? Any questions about any of that?
This was just the updated on the clerk's office job titles?
Yes.
We took, we discussed that at the last meeting. Is that correct?
The August thirteenth meeting.
Yeah, I think you guys discussed it. You guys voted on last one. So this is really just a formality codifying that. So just really what we need is just a motion to follow that to the ordinance. In a second.
I make a motion that we update the title for the clerk's office.
I would just, it would just be to approve.
Just to approve them.
Oh.
Okay, was that just approved?
Yes.
So that motion from Carrie.
I'll second.
Second, to approve the amended ordinance.
Change it.
Three questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Those?
I don't want to vote this out.
Okay, this second.
Righty, I'm good. I approve. Okay.
This, I think we'll sign this one here since she wrote that ordinance normally. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the treasurer's office. Investment policy. This was-
Supposed to be the ordinance.
So the commissioners adopted the, I guess, to strike that, not the commissioners, the fiscal, the financial board adopted the policy that'll be codified by the county council in this one.
The commissioners have approved it since the day, right? In the, in the ordinance itself.
Yeah, which is actually the investment policy.
It's in the backwards from, usually the commissioners approve the ordinance in the-
Ben, did you, did you want to speak to what it, basically what it is?
Actually, what I was trying to get done with this is to be able to go outside of our Switzerland County, to be able to invest funds. It, this does not include like Trust Indiana, but like CDs and whatnot. So I can get, I need to have bids on the CDs, the rates and everything like that. So with just two banks in town, I'm not really able to get a bigger area to get some better rates. And also too, working with Baker Tilly, the investment group that they have would like for me to, you know, be able to go outside the area so they can scan the state of Indiana as far as, but, you know, rates. So.
And that's- Legislature made a change to allow for that. I think this is just following right in line with that. So that's the last one.
You had one bank that closed out an account on you because we didn't have this.
Yes, yeah, Huntington, Huntington Bank. So. And I don't know, do you, do you have a copy of this or?
Yes, yes. Just got, Gail put the ordinance number on.
Okay.
The sign, as you mentioned, by the financial board, which is the commissioners. Might have any questions for a minute?
It was ours, just says ordinance.
What's she called in the rest of the day? Oh, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion, Lance.
Second. Motion from Patty, and a second from Scott to approve ordinance adopting Social County investment policy. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. All right.
Do you all have any questions? Interest questions? And it's always like the hot topic, the interest. Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is the inkeeper's tax increase. Forward your, the email from, from Mark sent the email with the attachments, the report that he put together. And, and as you know, the General Assembly had revealed that we could raise the tax. We're currently at five percent. We can raise it as high as eight. And all, if Mark was coming up, do you have any questions for Mark?
I have a question. Weren't, weren't we going to look at changing the ordinance though to match the state, the state statute as far as the in tax to include campgrounds and or whatnot? Because we had that discussion that was going to be looked into, but I don't. Because right now, doesn't, doesn't our county just have it set where it's brick and mortar hotel? Do you know, Gail?
I, yeah, I'm pretty confident.
Our current ordinance does track with, mostly track with what the statute allows. We do need, if we're going to do this, if there's a vote tonight to do this, we need to give a couple of different ordinances. There were some minor changes made to the body of the tourism board. Because this is a tax that you're authorizing, and the tourism board is the one that's at the top of it. And they're the ones that are able to use it. So I want the commissioners to change the ordinance that established the tourism board. And then we also, if you're doing anything above five, going up to eight, you need to create a separate fund. And then we also need to craft a separate statute. I can take a look if there's anything we're, we're missing. But as it stands right now, from a application standpoint, this does not change any of the application. This just authorized that extra percentage. Anything that is taxed now should still be taxed. But if something's not being taxed that should be taxed, that may just be in the application and I can-
Because that's my, that's my question. Because the state statute has, it doesn't include campgrounds. It says less than thirty days.
And I'll be honest with you, it does say that. And I don't, I don't know honestly who logistic toggles the switch that says, "You must pay this." So that's more of a logistics question.
Because that, to me, we can't just look at Voltaire. I don't know what you guys think, but I don't think, I think we have more revenue ability generation from this tax from the campgrounds in this county than we did, hundred percent.
And, and like I said, that's not necessarily a default in our ordinance. That's more of a default. And however this is getting toggled, that says, this is, whoever is applying this, that's what we need to talk to. That's more of an application question. So I can-
Because the statute is already there.
Yeah, the statute and the ordinance is-
We, we've had this conversation looking at this. So I mean, I think that, I, I agree with Kim on this. We're missing out on a thousand campsites. Now, some of them are going to be over thirty days. I get it. There's no state that you can't charge for over thirty days. But there's a significant amount of sites that we're not including that could bring revenue to the county or to tourism on this specific program. So it makes sense that we look at our ordinance and change that. I don't think past council or commissioners really paid attention to the campsites. And I think campsites have grown in this county expeditionally, from one end to the other. So it would make sense. We'd want to capture some of them.
So what I'll do is just figure out, and, and I don't know if Gail or the treasurer knows, who, who's the one that's the actual, does anybody know logistically, practically, who's monitoring this on a day-to-day basis to make sure that there's an inkeeper's tax collecting?
The state does not, I don't want to turn, the treasurer doesn't.
The state, state is the one that monitors. Yeah, like if you have, if there's a D R B O or something like that, we don't.
That's what I thought. So that's why I'm wondering why we're not collecting. That's the, because our ordinance is fine.
I understand there's only one or two counties that's doing it though. And I think White County is, I think the only one that's doing it.
But it doesn't mean-
No, I'm not saying that. I think most, I think most counties are kind of like how we are and like realize. Yeah.
See logistically why it's-
Because I don't have it even states. I'll say.
The, Gary, the other items you mentioned, the, the ordinance change with the commissioners and also establishing the fund, because it'll be done after the fact.
Yeah, so what I would do would mean, if you guys want to move forward here, you guys can vote on it now. I'll prepare the ordinance for you to actually vote at the next one to adopt it and then create the fund. And then the commissioners will be able to vote on Monday to fix, just, we were grandfathered in how we used to do it, but they did make some changes. So I want to make sure we're completely in compliance with the new statute.
And it's currently five. I mean, voting up to eight.
The statute allows you to take it up to eight. It allows you to have this other fund. But it's still, when you're authorizing this tax, it goes to the tourism board. And they're the ones that actually spend the money. And it has prescribed uses, but tourism-related expenses, things like that.
And then my follow-up question to that is the new, the new packet that we got, Plan A, Plan B. I understand the Plan B are portable in case of, you know, with something that happens. But do we know yet anything from the D N R?
Not have the answer yet. I've inquired. I do not have the answer yet. Plan B kind of came up because, kind of answering all of your questions you had about, you know, building, thinking phases, the river. Yeah, the biggest thing is, you know, who, who wanted to carry debt? Because ultimately, it's going to be the town or the county. And both, both of you guys are kind of hesitant on that. This way, Plan B, cash flows, everything. You know, we can get started with what's in the tourism commission funds right now. Just, we'll just call it a COVID dividend, if you will, because that didn't get spent in twenty twenty, twenty-one, just before I got here. But for various reasons, that's there. So we can, you know, this tax, we won't see any of this money if it started January first until almost May. So, so we can start tomorrow. Moving ahead on this while we wait for the cash flows to come in later on. But I, that's basically how Plan B came about, is to answer a lot of your questions about the river. Portable is, you know, we can also do different things around the county as well. You know, we can do something at Markland Park, Patriot, whatever, being portable. So it gives us a lot more flexibility. And it's probably going to be a lot cheaper to have, to do it this way.
Like, to be honest, Patriot, I kind of like that idea.
I thought you might.
But that was, that was my question was, where, where the D N R and the near?
Yeah, I'm way down the D N R. I mean, Plan A is still Plan A. We're going to do our due diligence on it, but there's-
A fallback in case.
Well, I would say it's probably going to be a hybrid of A and B because there's a lot of questions that have to be answered for A and may not be able to be answered with A. have to be answered for A and may not be able to be answered with A because of, I mean, the Valterra question is not obvious. Well, me, you know, had a warning shot with Rising Sun. But Plan B, if Valterra decides, hey, we're, we're closing down in seven years from now, everything is paid for. There's no debt. We don't have to worry about that. It just, we just stop where we are. So.
Is that the stage of the wine festival that's now?
Pardon me?
Two stages has been.
The big one, they rent that. The smaller one, that's, um, the trailer with the.
I think, I think the wine festival.
Yeah, that one.
One where they have the clean, I guess, and stuff. I think they own that.
Yeah, they do.
But they rent the big one that's bigger.
Yeah, that, that came as a big package. As part of the production, so.
Was voting on it? Are we voting on the timing of it? That it's going to be a five, ten? We're just voting to do the increase out of January first.
I'm really for the, the increase on the idea of a stage and pavilion. I like that. But to me, the Plan B is, you know, your, your Plan A is, is up here and it's. And your Plan B, it's like, it's underneath the wall, in my opinion. I mean, you, you're going through this grand thing. I think it'd be good for the area. Great, wonderful. You know, a trailer, basically. That's kind of. If you're going to build a pavilion down there and have a stage and have.
Like I said, Plan A is still.
Every quarter and, and there's some like, some, some legitimate belief that that's going to happen with this tax increase. But we really don't have any control. Uh, we increase the tax. You know, he can come to us in good faith and tell us you're going to do everything in the world and then, and then you don't. And that's a lot of our responsibility. But I just feel like a lot of unknowns as far as that's going to happen. And then I don't like Plan B.
That's just where I'm. I'm going to piggyback on Scott a little bit too. I think it's a great concept. I, I imagine it would get a lot of use, especially after, you know, the end of the wine festival recently. And I think it's something, if, if we had other events throughout the year, people use it, school could use it, uh, just all kinds of opportunities. But I just feel like this, we're just not ready yet. To me, I, I need, I need approval from D N R if we're allowed to do anything. I'd like to see the tourism board commission. I like to see, uh, you know, we approved this, Town of Eevee, we approved this, Wine Festival, we approved this. Some sort of lease agreement between, uh, the town and tourism, who owns what, who's going to do maintenance? There's just, I feel like, cause all we're doing is releasing the money, kind of like he said, we, we, we're out. We have nothing. At least we could, for me, I could say, well, I okayed the money because I've got a plan that everybody's on board with. D N R says we can do it. We're good. I just think we're, whatever, six months. I think we're, I like the idea. I just don't, I think we have too many boxes we need to check before I, before I can say yes.
Okay.
I'm speaking for anybody else.
Mark, I, I gotta agree with where Bill Scott and Kim and Lance are right here. Um, I just think there's too many, too many things open, but. And I, I appreciate the plan. Tell you guys, it's done a tremendous amount of work. Um, and it did ask, it makes me ask some other questions. Under the benefits portion of this, you stated Valterra proves the project should an Rising Sun scenario happen in the future. Why is just Valterra being offered that?
Does it see, I mean, that's, it's the bulk of the tax. It is, really is.
But if you get a thousand campsites, now the camp owners.
I don't know what that number is. I don't have that number. I'm working with the numbers I have in front of me. And that's the problem with, with Plan A. I mean, do you, who's going to guarantee the debt? The town, the county?
Tourism. Tourism is guaranteed. I mean, you, and you're getting to a question that I have, because you put it in there. And I'm, I'm learning quickly about making people that walk up and say, you don't have to pay anything and then we, we own it. We have to make decisions already. You put it in there, I would ask that our lawyer puts it into whatever that agreement that Lance talked about, a contract that if this thing does go south, then there is maybe some debt that you guys are picking it up.
Yeah, but who is tourist?
Well, I, I will say that one of the allowed uses in this fund, one of the free prescribed is for tourism to be able to take, uh, money. So this, this, this tax revenue can be used to borrow against, so to speak.
See, I think. So you're asking, you're saying the, the nonprofit side of tourism or the commission?
Well, the commission's the one that controls this money. So that's the end schedule. That's, I'm just from a point of order in terms of how this works, that the prescribed uses, you can use it directly. You can use it to borrow against as well.
But you become, I mean, I think a contract and understanding just based off of what we've already gone through, you're putting in there that Switzerland County doesn't have any responsibility to it. That's going to make our taxpayers feel better. That's our job as tax, taxpayer.
And that's what kind of what Plan B is. Essentially when it's also not, there is no debt anywhere along the line.
Gotcha.
So if something were to go south five years down the road, you know, tourism's on the hook. You're not going to wipe tourism out. You're not going to wipe out the town. You're not going to wipe out, you know, whatever the debt would be on the county. It just stops right there because everything we've done, if we purchased stages, built a pavilion, has been paid for in cash.
But irregardless, if we do the, the N tax, the way the state statute is written, we're not a hundred, we're not dependent on Valterra.
Say that again?
We're not dependent on Valterra for the, for the N tax.
No, but I say that because a vast majority of those funds come from Valterra.
They do now, but what I'm saying though is.
But I don't know that number from campsites. I, you know, I.
And I think that's the point that people are making here is there's, there's too many still unknowns that maybe you're six months ahead of your schedule. We need to close the gap.
Every weekend is a rotating at the campground.
I can, I, I get where you're coming from.
There are some that stay.
It doesn't, it's not even relevant to us where this money comes from. If, if tourism commission comes to us and says, we have a solid plan. We're going to build a bed. We're going to take out this debt. We've got all our ducks in the hole. We want you to raise tax six percent. I would vote for that. And if Valterra does pull out and they take on that debt, that is their problem, not ours.
Well, I mean, I'll, I mean, I'll tell you right now, the commission, we, we talked about this at our last meeting.
Well, they would have to, that's what Lance just said.
And we shouldn't be.
Well, if, if the expectation is that you want tourism to, to take, bring on the debt or, you know, be responsible for it, then Plan B is going to be the plan all day long because that's what we talked about. Because we would be cash flowing it, there would be no risk to anybody. Uh, tourism, the county or the town. Plan A is, there's a lot of risk because just for various reasons. I would love, I think we all agree, we would love to build the permanent structure.
Right.
You know, even if D N R came, you know, walked in here right now and said, you can do this. I'm not sure it, it totally works because of who, who's going to back the debt. I mean, tourism is reliant on the tax and it's, it's a pseudo county agency. That's what I'm trying to getting at. I mean, it, it.
I don't, yeah, I don't live where it's solid here.
Okay.
I'm pretty confident county's not taking on debt. So.
Well, that's my point. So, so if the county's not going to take on the debt and the town's not going to take it and you're expecting tourism, but I'm telling you right now.
That's where the money's going.
Okay, then I'm going to.
All the money goes to tourism.
That's correct.
This is their project. This is their responsibility. And all these things I'm mentioning is their responsibility to get.
And in that case, I'm telling you, Plan B will probably be, I mean, ninety nine percent will probably be the plan be, because if you're expecting the five oh one and C three to take on the debt, yeah, they're not going to take on a two million dollar, probably a million and a half dollar project. Because, you know, for the same reason you're not going to, and the same reason the town's concerned about doing it. So, so based on that, yeah, we, we want to cash flow the project based on, you know, you, you mentioned this a while back about building in phases. I mean, that makes sense in this scenario. Um, so, you know, right now we would, you know, look at purchasing stage or stages immediately, have those ready for twenty twenty six. Start saving up to build that pavilion, work with D N R, get that built within three to four years or five years, depending on tax in, you know, and we can still answer the question about, um, you know, the RV parts. I, I have no idea how much revenue that might generate. Are we talking about a ten percent increase or fifty percent increase? I, I don't know that answer. And I, we wouldn't see those monies probably until two years from now, probably. By the time you get an ordinance. And I don't know if there's a quick way we could just, you know, find those numbers to do the easy math or not. I don't know.
I reached out to the Department of Revenue to ask if somebody could get in contact me with me about who is the actual person that's deciding what's getting taxed. So it's not.
Anybody have any other questions for Mark? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda is board reports. Around the table, anybody, couple updates from the boards?
We had a, we had a recycling board meeting, uh, end of August, and it was pretty much just going over budgets and budget.
School down meets next. Questions, comments? Two minutes.
I can't get started on the discrepancies and falsisms and all that were expressed at the August twenty fifth meeting, budget meeting by some council members. But I would like to say that Kathy, the health department was, was instructed to balance that chunk that was not there. And we did that. And it was unfortunate. We had to eviscerate what was left of Health First Indiana. Got eighty for twenty six. We got eighty thousand more coming. You don't know that, but anyway, we've obtained that information from the State Department of Health. So I would think the next year would be similar. So some of the carryover we won't have would be going in, carryover that we haven't used, I should say. Some of that carryover will be used for twenty six. It probably is the carryover will be used, including the eight thousand for the next year. And then that's the end of that. I don't know where you're going to get the money from, from there. The budget has been in the three hundred thousand dollar, uh, ballgame for years. It took a little lull during COVID because there was nothing going on but during COVID, except for COVID vaccinations. I mean, the, the basically, there weren't a lot of septic installations. There weren't a lot of other things going on. So you didn't need that much money there. I'd also like to point out that in the past ten years, local Department of Government Finance has come in and stripped money back out for the budget for two thousand fourteen and two thousand for two thousand twenty four. Two thousand fourteen was approximately three hundred and ten or something. I don't remember exactly. Yours was over three hundred. So we had to use the rest of that because it's a non-reverting fund. So theoretically that money will stay there. If you're conservative, that money's going to build up over time. You should be able to use it in lean times. Well, that didn't happen in two thousand fourteen because there was only fifty six thousand dollars that was, that came from county tax base. The rest of that came from the health department because we're conservative. Turnaround last year, two thousand twenty four, how am I doing? Minute, minute and a half or something. Uh, so two thousand twenty four, the same thing happened, but it was worse. So there was money that was accumulated during COVID because those, all those people running around there. You know, you talk about safety features, working during COVID, giving vaccinations, one thing or another, that got charged out to bacteria in different insurance companies and things like that. So they actually made a little bit of money during twenty twenty one, and then you were kind of on backup. So twenty four, the amount was fourteen thousand that came out of taxes dollars in that year for the twenty four budget. So at the end of twenty three. So the rest of that, there again, was from a non-reverting fund. It was come up in there. So, I mean, it, it might even be something for the General Assembly to look at. Why is it a non-reverting fund if it reverts? And that, that, that's a case in point, two times in ten years. I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't make good sense. So then you get in some kind of crunch like this. And to me, the only question at all on this is by helping supplement those salaries, to get those salaries up, so you don't have turnover every five minutes like in two thousand twenty three. And we did, we lost, we lost an executive director because the hospital wanted to pay her double to get her back. We lost our food inspector, which came up with a better job next door. Uh, one person was laid off and then our health nurse had a stroke. And subsequently from that, we've learned from that health nurse position, and we have cut that salary down. It's three days a week now. So we don't just have somebody there to provide, provide the tetanus shot right on the spot, but Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, things of that nature. You can still get things done, but you're not paying that big salary. And yeah, it's going up with the cost of inflation and I don't know. I don't know if you got the groceries for yet.
I got, I kind of got a question per page and maybe we better have the budgets. We had a few funds that, that are starting to accumulate a higher balance and I think they need reassessment. You know, you get a higher cash balance because you're a conservative, but I, I know they said you could use, use it for capital expenditures, but if you don't need any capital expenditure, like there it is. And then you get less revenue. So you end up getting, you end up hurting yourself because you didn't spend the money. That's just not good. So I like.
It's not common sense.
I mean, I've heard what other options there are for her and, and.
I mean, I tend, tend to go more of the opinion that we need some monitor to be able to do Zoom meetings with. Well, next time there's a surplus, maybe it should be one the size of that wall. You know, it's just, it's, it's, it's nuts. It's just nuts trying to be conservative whenever this dumb stuff goes back.
Did, um, when you guys spoke with Baker Tilly, obviously focused on these next two years, but did they offer, um, more help to, to look at twenty twenty eight and, and how things have changed now? Like, can we meet with them later?
I would think, but I mean, we don't, you don't know. I, I'm, my assumption is, and I followed this pretty closely. I know Matt's the expert on Health First Indiana, but I have been involved with it since probably, um, April of twenty three, excuse me, February of twenty three. Yeah, it wasn't twenty two, Matt. It was twenty three. So in February twenty three, I went up and we started following that. In April of twenty three is when we started losing all the employees at the health department, one thing or another. I was around. I was in better health at that point in time. So I started kind of filling in. I learned quite a bit about it. And my opinion is that we will be reverting back to two smaller funds, the older funds, like Local Health Maintenance Indiana and Indiana Trust, which amount to a little less than forty thousand. We always received those over the years. However, whenever Health First Indiana popped up, those, you would forego those to have Health First Indiana. So of course, the first year, we had a brand new administrator who's just getting trained. So we hung in there and we were one of them that signed on. We opted in. That's not up to the council. It's, it's up to the executive branch and they did. And we opted in for that. I'm, I'm proud of being involved in that. We took in a hundred and fifty thousand, almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars the first year. We took in three hundred thousand dollars for this year. There will be an eighty thousand dollar taken and there'll be one more eighty thousand dollar taken. So if nothing else, we've arranged it such that we're helping finance the county budget. While we're, while we're of course, losing the ability to be able and go out and work on health issues.
Thanks, Aug.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? All right. I'm going to take a motion to jurors. Is that second? All those in favor? Were jurors. So you found out.